Audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the right, from the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, on the agenda, is the consent agenda. To approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the release of the minutes of the executive session, Board of Selectmen's meeting of September 18, 2018, as presented.
Second.
Just one item in the minutes. Only two have assigned it. I think we should be signing by all of us?
Yeah, Brian brought that up.
I think for minutes we should all sign. They're on the rack.
All in favor?
Aye.
There is none. I guess we get right into appointments. Carol Harris, Woodwood, and Curran to present the Infiltration and Inflow Phase Study. Ms. Harris here is to present the Phase Two Sewer System Infiltration and Inflow Evaluation Program. The program was conducted to assist the town to identify and reduce extraneous flows from the municipal water system and help to save money to reduce costs of wastewater treatment. Ms. Harris, you're on.
Okay. And should I go, Victoria?
Sure, please.
Sure. And with me today is Jason Jankoudis. Jason was the project manager for the III project, so he'd be here to also help out with any questions. If I can move this a little. There we go. First of all, does everybody have a copy of the report? Phase Two report? We have a couple extra copies with us.
Yeah, we see that. I did not bring it up.
Aye. It was in your pen. You probably can read it.
I think mine's probably not there.
That's all right. Thank you. We're just going to refer to a couple maps, and it might be helpful.
Thank you.
And a quick summary handout, as requested.
Thank you.
That whole report's on the page? No, it's not. Not quite that much. So we thought it might be helpful to give a little overview of where this project has how it started and where it's been, because it's been ongoing for several years now, and to show the progress the town has made and the benefits that have been obtained. It started in 2015 as a result of a DEP requirement that all sewer authorities conduct an infiltration inflow evaluation program in order to identify extraneous flow and eliminate it. The purpose of that is so to not have clean groundwater being treated by the wastewater treatment plants, and of course, the result to the community is cost savings. If you're not sending just wastewater to the plant, if you're mixing it with clean water, then you're also paying for that treatment process, which is a huge cost to the community. So it started in 2015, when the first agreement was signed, and we completed the first phase in 2016. Just to give you a background about the size of the town's system, there are 44,000 linear feet of gravity sewer pipe in Forest Main, approximately 220 sewer manholes, and four municipally-owned wastewater pump stations. Keep those numbers in mind, please, as we go through what has been investigated to date, because it's an ongoing program, and in order to be more cost-effective for the community, the program has been proceeding in segments. Clearly, not everything can be done at the same time, so it's been prioritized, and different segments have been done in different phases of the work. The first phase consisted of an overview of the whole system, and that was a flow assessment. And in your reports there, under Section 2, there's a map, Figure 2? No, excuse me. Wrong map. Section 1. A lot of figures in there.
Section 1? Back to Section 1?
Figure 1, too. Section 1. That shows the whole study area, which was all of the main sewer in the downtown area. So keep that in mind as we go through the different phases. The flow isolation was an overview of this entire area, and the purpose of that was to get a snapshot sense of where the worst areas were for defects in pipe and manholes. Based on that overview, the town proceeded with the first phase of investigations, which included 34 manholes and approximately 10,000 linear feet of pipe inspection. So the first phase looked at approximately a quarter of the pipe and 15% of the manhole inspected. And the next figure, on Figure 1.3, shows the Phase 1, Phase 2 areas that were identified in pink and blue. The 2016 areas that were pipe inspected are in the red pink color, and the 2018 pipes that were inspected are in the blue color.
So quick question. You're not looking at every inch of every pipe. You're standing.
No. The flow assessment looks at the whole system. Based on that, we identify the worst areas. The worst areas were prioritized for Phase 1, and then, as we proceeded with Phase 2, we looked at the next segment of pipes and manholes, and that was the next area down in the overview that looked like it would be the worst situation. So as you can see, to date, we have approximately a little less than 50% of the pipes have been inspected, and approximately maybe a little more than a third of the manholes. The chart on the bottom of this summary page shows the numbers, the linear feet, total linear feet, the number of manholes that have been inspected in each phase, and then the total to date is in the last column. What has been identified in both of these phases is infiltration from groundwater, which is the basic problem for the town. And through the two phases, approximately 20,000 gallons per day of infiltration has been identified. Dan, being as efficient as he is, has moved forward with all of the improvements that were identified in Phase 1. And Phase 2, I'm sure, have probably been pretty much.
Not totally done yet.
Rehabilitation has been moving forward on those. And the net result to the community is a potential cost savings of $23,000 with what has been identified to date.
Can you see this in the bills? Like, how you fix these? Can you see the reduction in the bills? You know, that we're getting billed?
Yeah, in some parts, but still in the best season. We still get the feeling that it's not from groundwater. I believe it's from cell phones.
That's another issue. We haven't addressed that at all.
We have an issue with that this time.
So that's from Ray. Ray Moore.
Yeah.
And that has not been addressed in either of these studies, the inflow. That'd be another segment of work. So that's what's been completed to date. Questions on? One thing I do want to bring to your attention is on the numbers here on the chart at the bottom that shows the number of defects that were found in manholes and those that were found in the pipes. That, I want to put that in perspective, and the fact is, the III inspections are considered a snapshot in time. I mean, when these inspections are done, we do it at the high groundwater season, because we want to see the worst conditions, but it's still a snapshot in time. You don't capture everything. But what it also identifies is other defects that can contribute to infiltration, or it just needs to be repaired, that one wouldn't know about, because they're below the surface of the ground. So keep in mind that besides the fact that these numbers, which were confirmed III defects that were identified, actually noted III coming into the pipe or manhole during the inspection, there were, you know, many, many more defects that were identified that Dan has taken care of and repaired. And looking on the tables, I mean, a little firm, just to give you an idea of what's been identified in Section 2, on page 2.1, Table 2.2, that gives the summary of all the manhole defects that were found. And this is the list of the manholes that were inspected on Page 2.1 and 2.2, and some had no defects, but you can see through the list, there were quite a few other defects that were identified. And those structures, number one, could lead to more problems, may have III at some point in time, that just wasn't detected when, at that snapshot in time when the testing was done. So there identifies a lot of other issues that's part of the maintenance of the system. And the same with the pipes, which is on Page 2.5, Table 2.4, gives all the pipes that were inspected, and again, it lists quite a few had no defects, but there were quite a few others that had defects that were identified. In fact, on Page 2.6 is a picture of a bulging pipe that was picked up that one would have never known about if, you know, without these inspections.
So you send the camera down there?
Actually, that was all part of the video.
What led you to test those areas? I mean, you just picked them, or was, did you identify a problem there?
That was part of the first thing, though. When we first did the first initial analysis, they parked every manhole, and they, you know, they checked the flow in each manhole. So the worse, the more flow in the manholes, right, was where we targeted first. They went after them first. That's why you should've seen that the first thing. They overlooked the whole system as a whole.
Yeah.
That was part of the first phase.
So that's what you did?
Correct. So that was park at all manholes and see where the most flow was first. And then, that's when we tackled it and started caring them areas first, the worst ones first, and now instead of, we're still continuing the rest. But that was the worst.
Those inspections were all done at night, when it's assumed most people are asleep, and there shouldn't be a lot of flow, so if you see flow in the middle of the night, that's a big sign that there's infiltration, so that's where we focused our investigations.
We also identified that the start was the oldest part of the infrastructure, too, as well, right? That we know that that was the oldest part of the infrastructure, this village area.
Which was probably the worst condition.
Common sense would tell you that's where you're going to go and stop first, not where your new sewer pipe's been laid. I'll come on this piece of paper that you just handed to us. There's zero done in Phase 2 on flow isolation. Can you explain that versus the first phase we did in 2016?
Right, because the first phase, we did the whole system. As we said, we did the whole system as an overview, and so that would not need to be done again for probably five years. The general schedule of, it's an ongoing program, so about every five years, you would do an overview of the whole system, and based on that, you prioritize the areas that you wanted to inspect periodically in a phased approach.
Any other questions? So not many defects. The first phase, we had several, and this time around, it's two and two.
Well, that's why I wanted to point out that, you know, the charts in the report show that there were other, these that were identified are specifically III, but there are many other defects that were identified that could lead to III, could lead to further problems, and that were structurally needing repairs.
So those all identified?
Those were all identified in the report.
Okay, thank you.
And the cost savings is based on an average of six months, and that's basically because you assume high groundwater is basically six months of the year. So assuming that the infiltration is all from the high groundwater, then we use that cost savings on an average of six months versus an annual.
What was the cost savings that you projected in 2016?
$23,000.
$23,000, in six months, though, right?
Yes.
I'm going to go off-topic a little bit, but it's related to what you do. And something, and I've talked about, there's a sewer line, a dedicated sewer line that runs from our school up, down Middle Road and up Peckham Road, that when it was installed to serve our school, it was intentionally oversized with the idea that someday we'd allow residents to tie into that pool, into that line. And it kills me, because residents up and down that line are putting in new septic systems. And I guess we just tried to get permission to allow households to tie into the line, and we were told that we can't. And that just makes no sense at all to me, that we've got a sewer line there that's got more capacity than the school can put into it, and yet, somebody's telling us that we can't use that to provide some relief to some property owners. It makes no sense at all to me.
I'm going to let Jason answer that. And it could be used for some, but not for all of them.
Some, something.
Jason is the one who had done some investigation into that to evaluate the feasibility.
Okay, thank you.
Right, yeah. We've had some discussions with Dan and Kathy and Brian about that possibility. So what we did was, we contacted a manufacturer of grinder pumps that are designed to serve a single-family house, and based on our discussions with them, the issue is that these pumps are a different type of pump than the one that serves the school, so that they're basically designed for a high-pressure situation, so there's, based on the scenario we looked at would be if every house along that Forest Main tied in with a grinder pump, and in that scenario, it's possible that they could essentially overpower the pump at the school. So, you know, there are other scenarios. We could look at number, you know, what might that number be, where you're kind of breaking even, where the school pump station can still function, but these individual grinder pumps are not overpowering those.
It just feels big picture. We prefer to have people putting their sewerage into the sewer system than into the ground. And if we can't tie 150 houses into that, fine, but could we tie 50? Is there septic systems?
Are some of the worst ones.
You know, we got people on Peckham Road putting in raised septic systems to get the systems out of the water table, and I'm sure those people would prefer to tie into the sewer line, which runs right by their house if they could. So, you know, when Brian said, they said, "No." Well, "no" is not an acceptable answer. I don't understand. So, I mean, 50 houses, 30 houses, 20, I mean, whatever the number is, I mean, we should give the, if we can, give the residents the option to do something with that line, which was, again, was intentionally oversized with the idea that someday, one day, we'd allow residents to tie into it.
Well, that's something we could evaluate.
And that's something we're looking at as part of the CWP as well. If you did a more traditional collection system and built a traditional pump station similar to what's at the school to serve those other homes, and you have a, you know, gravity collection system down to that station, then it would be compatible in that existing Forest Main.
Well, just, I mean, let us know what our options are. Yeah, I don't know what it costs. I don't know.
Right. So you're talking about grinder pumps. Those grinder pumps are installed in individuals' homes, if need be, right? If they can't be gravity-fed to the system. So what we first need to do is understand what homes can be gravity-fed to the system. We already know that, we just did an analysis, I believe, Carol, you presented us with, when we did the new pump station upgrade at schools, we know that we can't do 300, but I think you gave us a number of 100 and something homes that could be tied into that. So we know that our capacity to that line is going to be breached out, let's just call it 150. How many of those 150 that were able to tie into it without overexceeding that capacity would be gravity-fed homes? Try to identify where those homes are, which ones are going to require, within that geography, which ones would require a pumping station, a grinder pump in their home, so that pressure, because you're saying now, the new grinder pumps are higher capacity, so their flow, they push faster and harder.
Higher pressure.
Right, so you don't want that to be backing up what's already coming through the system. When you have too much pressure, it's going to be pushing back on that and causing problems further down scope. That's the gist of it all. We know we can tie in homes. There's nobody saying we can not tie in homes to that existing line. It's just how many we don't know.
How many, and what's the best way to do it?
And there may be modifications, there may be other modifications needed to make it feasible and work properly.
Correct. But that requires a whole study of that whole area, because you're not just going to willy-nilly and get it, I mean, we could do some gravity-fed, but we know we can't have, we don't have the capacity to do that whole area of town to that one sewer line. So there's, that's more of a discussion for a much bigger block.
Is that the case, that we don't have the capacity? Because if you have 75% gravity-fed, and 25% with a grinder pump, I mean, is it the grinder pump, the pressure that's the problem, or is it the amount of capacity that can, you get where I'm going at? I mean, you said the pressure of the pump, like, you know, instead of having 300 grinder pumps there, if you have, you know, 25, and then the rest is gravity-fed, will that work?
We looked at grinder pumps just because there's no collection system in that area other than the two schools are connected, are connected to the school pump station. If that sewer line extended, then you could, yes, you could potentially tie in more homes in definitely capacity.
My best recollection, I was on the school building committee, was when that line went in, that the future plan was anybody that tied in would have a grinder pump. That was the discussion at the time, and I don't know anything about any of this, so I'll acknowledge that, but my best memory was that anybody that was going to tie in would have a grinder pump. And so I don't, the gravity concept is new on that line. So, I mean, make a recommendation to us. It's either feasible or it's not, and if it's feasible, it just feels like something we should be doing for the residents along that stretch of road.
Okay. Well, we'd be glad to evaluate it, and we could give you some information on how it could work, if there's a number of homes that could be connected as-is, or if more homes were added, other modifications that might be necessary.
It's either feasible or it's not. I just, I mean, let it advise us as to what we should be doing.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you. Hey, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So want these copies back that I already have?
Do we have all our copies, at least?
That one is your copy. Took it out of the file cabinet.
Mine, I think, is at home.
Well, I can, please, I can have it. There you go. Thank you. Then if one gets lost.
It's a big file. All right, next, Budget Presentations. Merrill Lee from the Conservation.
You all have copies of my budget, right?
Sure.
Okay. The only thing that has changed in my budget this coming year from this past year is that I added $5,000 for a pollinator assistant for the garden. And it's, you know, it's like 10 hours a week for the whole season. I really could use a good, strong, young kid.
Can't discriminate about that.
Well, I could use somebody good and strong.
There you go.
With a lot of energy. And otherwise, it hasn't changed really at all, except for 2% increase in the salaries.
And the additional equipment?
Oh, yes. Well, you asked for capital equipment, right?
You can talk about, this is a good time.
Okay, well, that's the plotter. You know, big printer, so we can print our own big maps.
What is it?
It's a printer. It's a big printer for the GIS system, so we can do our own maps.
Would that come under the, no, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, this is a kind of situation where the finance committee would decide, A, you know, whether they approve it, but they could decide whether that would be in the capital budget, or that would be put in one year into our budgets. With $2,000, definitely, usually the line is $5,000, and we may even be able to get that donated. The whole colony has one, and we put an offer in on it, so if we get it, great, solves the problem. But we would like to be in control of creating our own GIS maps. This would be tremendous benefit to the highway department. It would be a benefit to us when we did zoning, it would be a benefit to us when we did conservation projects, et cetera. So we'd like to sort of be in control of our own ability to print a map. I wasn't here with the whole pollination kind of effect. I know you use the end point, but they're just not, they're not working out, or they're just not there enough, or?
Well, they're only available, they came for a week this past year, and, yeah, they were helpful for a week, but they're not, they're not anybody you can train in any way, because they're not going to be back for a while, or hopefully, all those particular people, you know? But they were, yeah, they were very helpful when they could get them.
Wait, Rob, I mean, how much do we want to get into depth and talk about budgets tonight, Mr. Chairman?
No, well, this is just preliminary. I mean, they're going to probably come back to us somewhere, and I think they'll go to the finance committee.
I think the board's budgets in the past have been voted on first before they go to the finance committee. I don't think the finance committee should be dictating to the board of selectmen. I think that the board of selectmen's job is to give the finance committee as clean of budgets as possible for their review, so we're not wasting our time and their time. So I know that this budget's not correct, because your salary's not correct, so.
Okay. I apologize.
I don't like, I don't like the idea that I'm getting budgets and I'm reviewing budgets and I have incorrect information in front of me.
Well, I believe the reason my salary's not correct is because part of my salary comes from the planning board.
Okay.
So that would be in there. But that's not.
That's fine. I just, I just.
It's still, I asked Julie about it, and she didn't have time to update it, and she needs to.
So again, I don't want to, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I don't want to be reviewing budgets that are incorrect, and I don't want to be looking at the same budget two or three times, especially when it comes to stuff like this. I'd like to just get budgets in the format that, as best as they can be, drill down to whatever is necessary that you need. The board can look at it, give our recommendations, or approval, or disapproval on certain line items, and move from there and just move these budgets on. I don't want to waste too much time looking at budgets and redoing budgets, because what happens is, you start looking at pieces of paper too much, and you start missing things. So I don't like to play that game. So I would prefer that when we get a budget, it's put in front of the board of selectmen, I like to just look at it and vote it, and say, "Motion to approve," and move it forward so the finance committee can get their job done as well. So, not your fault, I guess, but I would like to have clean budgets put in front of the, in front of the board, to be honest with you.
What was the equipment number again? One more time, I'm sorry.
On the new?
The $2,000.
$2,000, yeah.
What was that?
Right, it's a big printer to print, you know, good-sized maps from the GIS program.
Will we outsource that now?
We do.
What's the cost in a calendar year, you know?
It depends on how many you need. We can get them done for free from the Buzzet Bay National History and History Program, but, you know, that's like, how do I say this? It doesn't, they don't have the capacity to make many at a time, in a way. So if we need, you know, three for the building department, and three for me, and three for Dan.
So two grand covers buying this printer?
Pardon me?
Two grand covers buying a printer?
I believe it will. Yes, if we get one used, absolutely.
Trying to do this on a, I don't, because I want, I don't.
Is that something you can get off the state bid list?
No, I mean, I can get it off of the state bid list, but I'm not buying it. I'm trying to find one used.
Oh, there's no used weapon on there?
There is, but the plotters go fast, so they'll stay within the state government. So what I really want is, I've got an inquiry, and, because I know where one is going to come, possibly, for the goal, and I've got a lead on another one from a company that's going out of business. So my goal is to get it in here for less, but I really do believe that this is something we do need and would like to have. Always remember, though, in the case of a color printer, printer is inexpensive.
It's the.
Of course. Okay, so in fairness to Merrill Lee, you know, it's going to have to be an increase in the operating expense, but how much will be, depending upon what?
Should we be weighing those ups and downs?
Take into brand.
Advantages, disadvantages, versus what we're paying out now, versus what we're going to do in-house and see over the long term, based on the cost of printing cartridges and all that stuff like that?
Sure, I can put something together for you.
Thank you.
Is that it? You all done?
It's not that big of a budget.
No, it's not very big at all. And it's really not particularly different, except for the two things I mentioned.
Thanks, Merrill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dan? CPW?
You guys want Heather? She's a little smaller than me.
All right, Heather, yeah, if you want to take her out of the way.
It's also nicer.
Wow, thank you. Are you in, have you bought her?
And we received a letter, if you want to, I'll show them.
Hi, Ella.
How are you?
Good, you?
Hey, kind.
The AARP. The, you want to give us a, on the age, friendly ambassador?
Well, something that you didn't know, we... Well, something that you didn't know, we received word, and you know I met with you with Meg, and we were applying to AARP as an age-friendly community. We got word the other day that we've been accepted. So there'll be an official presentation of our certificate, and that's where kind of work really begins. But that leads me into my budget, because like Merrill Lee, I'm not asking for much. As part of our AAP designation, we're looking at our teaching plan at the Council on Aging. So we're just kinda looking at policies and procedures that we've never had before. And one of our focuses is on safety. And what we've identified is that we're a big building, it's very open. We don't feel that any town employee should be alone in the building at any one time. It's a safety issue. Someone's going down in the basement to get medical equipment, someone's dealing with a client, someone else comes in. It's just, it's not a safe scenario. So we've asked for a receptionist position for nineteen and a half hours a week, for a total of a little over twelve thousand dollars. And that's really the only increase that we've asked for, except for a little extra in our energy line. And really, we're always spending over on our energy line, and I don't think that's transparent to anybody who looks at our budget, and I don't think that's an honest, realistic. So just to kind of put it in line, what we actually spend, we asked to raise that a little bit.
The line item you're talking about, Heather?
It's just the two, I'm sorry.
Energy?
Energy, yep. We're asking for an extra thousand dollars.
Top one of the salaries, too. How about janitorial?
Janitorial, we're going up the two percent anticipated wage, but I didn't ask for anything extra.
Says four.
Well, four, that's actually a correction. What had happened is my budget last year didn't encumber for their two percent raise. So, again, I didn't feel it was transparent, just to ask you for two, so this way...
So it's two for my shit, too?
It's the two, right.
Okay, thank you.
And same thing with the van driver salary line. That's why that's also four.
And the bad time, that's a receptionist, you said?
Yeah.
We have a receptionist, though?
We have two receptionists that are funded through our state formula grant. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking away from activities and services that we could be expanding, and putting it into the receptionists that we're paying. And those receptionists are only twelve hours each. We're open forty hours, I can only cover twenty-four hours for the receptionist. So either myself or my outreach workers on the desk, and it works. But if somebody's on vacation, somebody's out sick, like Fridays, I'm alone in that building. I mean, I can handle it myself, but do you wanna...
You've been funding that position for a long time through grants, haven't you?
We have. Linda Gilbault's been in that position for a long time, we've expanded it, we're adding a second receptionist.
Yeah.
But we have a pushdown on activities that we can offer through that grant, so that we can pay the receptionist.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I'm not like them to want to hand out some for a lot of money, so... You guys wanna talk highway department?
It's what's first here, under public group side, maybe.
All right. You gonna just go on the ones that are up, correct?
Karen, you staying for this? Do you wanna?
Just stay for a little while.
Oh, okay. Didn't wanna be rude.
You guys get the reasons for the increases?
No.
No, I didn't.
So you didn't get to tell them, you had to read them to us.
All right, you got any of them, Karen?
Yeah, I got it.
Funny, because I was gonna ask, usually when you have increases in the previous years, you've given us backup.
I knew Mel was up, too.
What's that?
I may have, but I did not, I didn't, I was...
Thank you.
All right, so if you look at the highway department increases, basically, the big ones are just engineering fees, police details, and the road materials. Those are the big numbers here. And this is to look, you know, the drainage problems we have on Mendel, Amron Street, that we're gonna get taken care of this season if possible.
What line item are we discussing?
We got, there's three of them that been increased, did the big increases, which is the engineering fees, the police details, and the road materials.
Those are specific projects driving those numbers this week?
And also road, you want to, a lot of drainage?
Yeah, and it's gonna have to be, currently, I went actually through Merrill Lee, you got a section that's existing there that doesn't have catch basins, they're only, there's grates, but it's just, you know, a flat end going into the main, it don't got no way to entrap any kind of debris or anything. So whatever comes into the basins is just going down a pipe and going out to the, you know, the wetland. So, we, we're gonna have to redo the section that's there, it's existing, that's actually, you know where Frank Knox lives, that area, to Garrison. We're probably gonna have to redo the detention pond that's on Garrison. And then from there, I'm looking to redo and come up with a new plan to put in the rest of the drainage, all the way up to where the fire tower is, up over there, in that area, to catch all that hill where that part of the water just comes along the street.
That's Mendel, isn't it?
Mendel, correct, yep.
And Karen, so you mentioned detention pond, does it count on that one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So that one we do have, yeah, so that's a good one. That one's probably gonna have to be extended to get a little bigger to handle any more water that's coming down.
Can you back up to clerical? Salaries clerical?
Okay.
Well, salaries in general, but we can discuss that, some other, we'll discuss.
Okay. That is, that, well, it's really not an increase, it's, that was just Kathy became office manager, her duties got changed, so she's now, before, her salary was coming out of just water, and she had a little out of sewer, but most of her job position was, she was eighty percent water last year, and ten percent highway, ten percent sewer. And this year, it's more highway, it's all, it's, she's broken up between them all. If you guys look through water and sewer, you'll see deductions on that one, that were negative.
Should we change the title of that line item at this point, to something other than salaries clerical?
I think so. Sorry?
Should we change the title of that line item to something other than salaries clerical?
It's really, it's, well, that's for her, and we do have another...
We have another full-time staff in our office.
Correct, so that's for two full-time staffs, correct. But the main reason why it changes is because...
Kathy should be in another line item.
I mean, that's up to you guys, if you guys wanna switch it up, it's, we have, it's always been like that.
Business manager, you separate it. The don't side is we're separating each budget.
Well, Mr. Manon's salary's done the same way, it's broken into three different budgets. So I think that we oughta break out Kathy's, Miss Silva's salary, and re-describe that line item.
Okay, we are right now, Kevin, it is in this, she is broken up into three, that's why the number's cheap.
No, I know, it's not in the budget.
They wanna see the line item.
Okay.
So it's just better transparency, when we're looking at things, and we understand things, instead of this, this is a, you know, a combination of things, reflecting that.
I don't think the title describes the role.
Right.
Yep.
So, we can...
So that's something, you know, we could, before we go...
Miss Silva, talk to Miss Ebert, create a line item for that, and refresh that budget.
Okay.
Just deserve it. She was promoted.
No, no, I agree.
You don't want your job falling to labor, do you?
Oh, I'm a key, what do you...
But, I mean, the, the other salary, you know, we got a four percent, we get eight point seven percent, is that that one's contract, I'm assuming, that's...
Correct, yep. And again, I don't think this reflected because of last year's, didn't get the percentage in it.
So there's some retro.
Correct, yep.
So that'll be confirmed?
Well, actually, overtime, that one, I don't know.
Well, it's, you have to do that, right? So your contract, you have an increase in your contract, so you have increase in salaries, which is gonna have the effect on overtime, so you can't short your hours. If you wanna be same productive crew, you gotta increase your overtime to reflect the increase in salaries.
Correct.
You know? Kinda goes handed forward, right?
Yep.
I mean, unless you wanna do less hours, right? I mean, and I don't think, I think that we're producing pretty good results, I'm true. So, I don't think you wanna take away hours. I think, you know, if anything, it'll probably be increasing, depending on what projects we're gonna be doing. So, my question is, is five enough?
I'm sorry?
My question is, five enough on the, on the overtime?
Not really.
Well, I mean, it's...
Depending on the projects we're doing, especially, like I said, you know, depends what happens with water and sewer and all that stuff, that's gonna be a whole nother animal when we get to that, I guess, but, you know, that's, my goal is just doing some of that, you know?
We can talk about that once we get to water and sewer, because I got some questions of what you've done here, but you haven't done there, so we can talk about that one.
What's up?
Yeah, same thing. So there's some of that retro?
We don't know. I'll get, Kat, I'll get Julie to break it out, so we know precisely. And I think that it's a fair request to break out Kathy.
Yeah, just question, oh, Dan, the top one, the four percent director increase, is some of that the same thing as the, as the contract? Some of that's retro back to prior year?
Yep. Do I wanna change that to eight? Oh.
Sure, I don't know what you wanna do with me.
Minus two.
No, just wanna, I mean, the one thing we've, I think in prior years, people came in with an assumption that the increase would be two percent, three percent, but I think we're still trying to figure out what that is, what that suggestion's gonna be based on cost of, based on cost of living. So, I think we're trying to figure out what that top line's going to be still.
Okay.
But I don't know what you were assuming in this...
We're currently two and two, that's what we've kinda, we're going on, that's what everybody thought was...
I haven't asked the board yet, before we call it, that'll come next meeting.
Does he have another question?
You guys have any questions more on highway?
As far as, as far as your gasoline?
Yep.
It's, it's, I mean, yes, it's because we're just being, doing more work, we need more gas.
A little bit, yes, and a...
The cost of gasoline's way down.
Uh, it's been, it's been up and down, Kevin, so it's kinda, that's a tough, tough situation.
I know, so it's just a guesstimation.
Correct. And I'm, and I think, yeah, if we are doing a lot more, you're gonna be using more fuel, so...
And then...
I can't get, I don't wanna be short, Kevin, just because I'd rather have it, it always goes back anyways, so that's like a...
You gotta get all of gasoline for the whole town in your budget, which is kinda, I guess, I don't wanna say wrong, but it should be, probably should be broken out a little differently. I mean, we do break it out in sewer and water, I think.
Correct.
Gasoline, so it's kinda like you're backcharging.
I do a report every month.
Sewer and water, but we're not doing it in other places, so, I mean...
Well, I mean, it's still part of the general fund budget, right, so that's...
We could, we could have that debate, some...
I'll give up gasoline, I'll give up everything, guys.
You know what the amount it takes?
Correct. I gotta, I gotta, I print the, actually, they get the reports every month, and it actually gives a breakdown of police, fire, gives every, when I give the report, it gives everything, but we're only backcharging water and sewer, because they're two separate enterprises, so that's why they get the reports. But on them reports I give every month, it has every single apartment, exactly what they use for fuel.
Okay, so your road materials, I guess that's something for the board to have further dialogue on. Road materials, what are you, what are you looking at? That's a huge increase? I mean, it's not if we plan on doing roads?
Yep.
But it is if we only plan on doing certain projects like you're talking about, so...
Well, I just wanna give you a little where I'm at now, and, you know, I'm, we had a hundred and twenty, I had a hundred and twenty when I started here, you know what I mean? And the prices keep going up, 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 and, you know what I mean? So really, my budget's going down, down, down every year. Currently, I think I got twenty-five thousand, I have a hundred and ten, I'm six months in. That's what I'm saying, if you guys want me out there and working, it's, you know what I mean? You're gonna be putting more material, more...
So road materials isn't to complement chapter ninety?
No.
That's a totally different issue, though, we should be discussing, you're looking at drainage.
Just drainage, just all the drainage I do with, I do, the only other thing I take out of that would be line painting, line painting comes out of that. But other than that, it's just stone, dirt, materials, it's pipe, it's just working on road asphalt, all the asphalt we do, all that stuff is out of that.
Asphalt, you can patch it and...
That's us doing all the patching, correct, nothing to do with chapter ninety whatsoever.
No, I understand it's not, this is not for yous to do roads, but I think there's a further conversation for the board, Mr. Chairman, to discuss maybe an article to further our advancements in chapter ninety and road reviews. I thought that was gonna be...
I mean, again, I...
God reels and everything, that's all part of that, right?
All part of that, so, yeah, move it through the budget. So, again, I was totally trying to be a reality budget, that's reality, if you wanna keep it rolling, I mean, it's, there's only so much money. It is what it is, like I said, I'll do what I have for money, and we, that's how we work it out, so that's how I've been doing it, and...
You get everything anyway, when you submit your bills, it's all, it's all coming out of that line item anyway. When you submit bills, we can calculate that and see what you've spent it on.
Correct, yep.
So that's all up for review, anyway. I know I look at them.
Yeah, yeah, yep. We could just look at all the greenbacks, I know exactly what I've spent the money on.
I just look at the other side, if they're not doing it, we just spend it for materials, if it goes out the bid, they have two hundred, it's six hundred.
Yeah, no, I know, I just, I just wanted to know, I wanted to know...
I understand the...
Discussion about...
I'll give you, I'll give you a little thing, you know, 'cause I checked on some prices for watermines and stuff like this, thirty-five dollars a foot, you ain't getting too many feet out, you know, anything, a hundred feet, you know?
That's costly.
Yeah, cost, that's us cost. And you got hydrants, which are over two grand, gate house, you know, almost a thousand bucks now. Everything's fortune, so, materials keep going up. But again, if you send it out to bids and have somebody else doing the work, it's gonna cost...
Just throw thirty, forty percent, just on the materials markup alone. They're not selling to you for cost, you know that any businessman's not gonna buy a product and sell it to you for cost, right? There's always a twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent markup on pretty much anything they're buying, depending on the business you're in.
Yep.
Any more questions on Paige Wayne? We did, that's one we have now. Snow removal, that's so far so good, I guess.
Yeah, this year, hopefully stays away, I'm gonna...
Yeah, no, but...
We're just, we're just salting in the barn, is where we are, low temperatures, we got some areas of town.
Yep.
I know we've done, I've seen some areas where it's kinda like a lot of salt, but you guys get called out by the PD.
Correct, it's all police calls.
And if you're out, and you guys are just driving around, you have to hit spots that And if you're out and you guys are just driving around, you have to hit spots that are dangerous corners, shot corners and things of that, and you're not just gonna drive by with a sand or not doing. When you guys go back to the yard.
Yep.
You have to manually dump that sand, you're gonna let that sand just sit there and zip and unload it up.
Yep.
I'm gonna call it the wimpy way, I actually watched it happen and I was kind of shocked.
Well, I mean, you let the truck run, that's what the old, all the old was like, the new truck, no, new ones got, which we don't got yet, should be in hopefully in a few weeks, and that one is just dump, dump the truck.
Yeah, that's the, that's the dump slash.
Well, it's got, what it is, is, this one's a dump truck, but it's got the, a chain built into the dump, so you can, all we get is the spinner comes right off, and then you can use it as, so like now, we'd be able to use this during the winter, and if a storm's coming, you just, it's two pins, you bolt the spinner on and run down the road, because the chain's in there, but it's still got a gate that you can just dump. These are firmly mounted, or the other ones are in the dump truck, we take the gate off and the sander goes in the back of it, and I, I'm done, I don't have a dump truck for all winters.
Well, we have that conveyor belt that goes, runs perpendicular to that belt, like you showed, you remember when we talked on the phone, you sent me out to Quail Lane or whatever it was, and they were just throwing room on the side.
That was actually, that was actually Wayham's old truck.
Yeah. Will our truck be outfitted with that?
Correct. Well, I'm gonna, that's gonna be one of the articles, I didn't get to that, we're doing articles tonight?
No, I'm just curious, because it's kind of a really neat feature to have for the workers.
Well, again, that's, oh, yeah, and it's a time thing, we just, if you read, we did two miles of road this year.
Yeah, just zip them.
That's a mile each way, so it's four miles of backing the edge of a road, and now that's just augering the material right to the side, and you know how much manpower and time that, that seems.
Very efficient.
Oh, yeah, it's unbelievable, so.
Maybe we can keep our own Wayhams.
Boy, if you do that, too.
They'll come back to get you sooner or later, find one.
All right, next, well, so, CMAAS, we understand recycling is the biggest increase here, doesn't look like it's going down anywhere.
Nope, I did talk with Evan from Holland the other day, so he's working on another out through Avon supposedly, some company back in, yeah, this was just this week he talked to me and I'm.
Is that recycling we're talking about?
Correct, so, so I said, I'm totally interested, so if, if we can get out and get into another place, that's what we're gonna kind of do, so currently, right now, we're kind of backs against the wall, and this is what we have to deal with. We've been, they rate the recyclings, A, B, and C loads, currently, we had a lot of ones with a C, we've never been in A yet, so that's like no contamination whatsoever, we've been staying in the B, which is 108 dollars and 50 cents a ton, where again, in the C is 150. This number I believe was based on 150, correct? 150 a ton, so that's put in worst case scenario, so hopefully, again, we do not use this, and hopefully, if this, something happens.
For people at home watching, so they understand this a little bit better.
Yep.
We used to pay, what, 32 bucks a ton?
$30 a ton, last, little over here though.
We used to get paid for it.
And it used to be $30 a ton.
Well, we used to pay 30 bucks a ton.
And it just kept going up and up and up, and we're, like I said, this year, I mean, I didn't even know, like, at the, it was going so crazy at the end of last year, when we did budgets last year, I couldn't, I didn't even come up with a number, I couldn't come up with a number. I put 75 a ton.
I know, it's insane.
And it went to 108, I went, you know, so, but it's been stable at this number, well, for a couple of months anyways.
Hey, thanks after a 500% increase.
Yeah, yes.
Then we're also continuing to do education on what you can put in the recycling bin, what you can't, and, and it's working.
Yep.
But it's a slow process, and we gotta break some bad habits, and then, you know, you notice New Bedford sends out the people to look at your trash and, you know, I hope we don't have to get to that.
They actually, they actually find.
Yes, yeah, I hope we don't get to that, but Kathy has done tremendous efforts, in fact, we're gonna be sending out a flyer in the census that further explains what is and what isn't. Just because, you know, sometimes we get a lot of stuff that's in there, and it's like, well, it ought to be recyclable.
I know, they get a little picky, I mean, pizza box is gonna stain grease on the top of a pizza box, and that's no longer recyclable, give me a break, what do you want?
What, what level are we at, was it A, B, C?
We're in B right now, I mean, I haven't, last time we had Frank's recycling pickup, we did not receive an email saying, because they'll send me emails showing me pictures of what's bad in the trash, what truck number, where it was, so I have a lot of good information. I didn't get any last time, so I haven't, I'm trying to be in contact with them, because that means that we probably did not have a bad load at all last time. So we are, like Brian said, we are making progress, slowly.
Because we had an A load, and they want us to know it so they can overcharge it, that's the reason why. Like, I guess a big, like you said, pizza box and.
Well, what I think a lot of plastic bags, what people are doing is, they'll take, like, say they got all their, you know, water bottles, and they're throwing them in a plastic bag, you tie them in a plastic bag, and that's, I guess the plastic bags get caught in their machines, and that's.
We've got banners up in the library now to say, no, no, don't do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one thing to the budget, CMAAS, even though I know it's up a lot.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, we've endorsed this heavy pickup once a year, causes.
What did we, what did we pay last time? It was like 12 grand, 15 grand for the heavy pickup, curb side?
Correct, well, no, no, that was, they bring it, they bring it to the.
No, I understand that, but if we want.
The time before we did it, we had a little round picking it up.
Yeah, what did that cost?
That was like 20.
20 grand? I don't know if there's an appetite, but I, I know there's a lot of residents that kind of come to expect it, I mean, it's the one thing that you can give back for the tax dollars that we pay for, that people see it as visible, it's tangible, that they can get their hands around, and they actually appreciate it, a lot of residents have talked to me about that. I'm in that camp where for 15 or 20 grand, why can't we do it with a $32 million budget? We should be able to afford to spend 20 grand once a year to do the heavy pickup, and it's, we had it, we done it, and then we got rid of it, and why we did that, I don't know, I just.
A little, a little bit about that, and that's why we kind of got the dumpster at the yard, because, I mean, we kind of, I thought we went through this a little bit.
We did.
We were kind of, that's why at least people got a place to bring it now, I mean, it's costing, because it's costing us, it's definitely cheaper, we're not, Kevin, we're not charging exactly what these dumpsters that, like, people are bringing couches and this and that, that's way cheaper than, we didn't, couldn't do the analysis just yet, just because it's all over the place yet, and I'm trying to narrow it down, and kind of working on that as well, but at least people got a place to bring it, so I think.
I agree, well, once a year, happy hour, let's call it.
It is, but the happy hours, what we're getting is because, like, if you tell, if you say, okay, one day, we're like, hey, we're gonna do this in town, okay, Dave, I'll call my brother up, hey, bring your stuff down, and coming in, and I think that's what happened that one year, and it costs us the 20 grand just because it was.
Yeah, well, you know, it's when they, when they bring it to the town bond, you check their license.
Correct, you know, you know they're a resident, stuff like that, so it's a little easier, a little more controlled doing it this way, if you wanted to do a free one, have it bring down to the town, that's, you know, and we worked out with the elderly, which I did that, you know, they, they set it up with us beforehand, and we went to the elderly, we picked it up and bring it to the bond, you know, the DPW did that, so that worked. Again, it just keeps it a little more, or instead of craziness, like we had, it was like, people had piles, like, you know, one, one dump, you know, one garbage truck loaded at a house, you know, how much can they have, you know, when they were picking up crazy amounts.
I know, I know there's a need for it, but we, you pick it up, where people can recycle that weekly, I mean, there can't be.
Again, that's fully up to the board, you guys do it, you know, whatever you guys feel, you have to do that, something you guys can discuss, and, I mean, if you guys want.
I'm in the mindset to add it to the budget, but anyhow.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, it's 20,000 if you guys are.
Someone, I mean, either whether it's.
And you know what, it might actually probably, you know, maybe you do 20,000 in this year and then see what, because it should be actually less, Kevin, because we did, because it was so long before we did that, maybe that's why, maybe now it won't be so big, and maybe a smaller item, and a lot less to be picked up, Charlie, so maybe we can do something.
I'd like to give it a shot and see what we come up with, I mean, you know.
Maybe if it costs 10 grants, you're like, okay.
You appropriate 20, if it only costs 15, the fire's going back into townspeople anyway, and it's for the townspeople, I think it's for the good of the town, to be honest with you.
Yep.
So, a one-time event, I think it should be done, I think it's a good way to.
The board agreed, you want, you guys want to put that money on or try that?
I mean, I've always joked. Curb side or to the town?
No, curb side.
Curb side.
I've always joked.
There's a lot of people that keep bringing their stuff to the town garage, not only elderly.
They picked it up, you know, they, they made it, they, they were, they offered the town services.
I make a motion to increase the heavy pickup, put a line item, put $20,000 in a line item for heavy pickup.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Bye.
So, on that end, we need to figure out when we want to do that.
We have to wait and see if the budget's approved by town meeting first.
Probably till the fall.
So, we'll wait and see what happens at town meeting with the budget, and then we'll, the board can figure out. Usually we did it, what, after Labor Day, September?
Well, we did, we've done both, we've done them in the fall, we've done, a lot of people like the spring cleanups, so it might be.
Can't, because town meetings aren't until May.
Yeah, but it may be the following thing, it's still be.
Yeah, well.
If you, I mean, we've done both ways.
You're falling a year behind.
Yeah.
Going, I don't know, here or there, we'll figure it out.
It's passage, yep.
Water department budget. The salary is permanently, but that's we added a person there, that's for that.
Correct.
Is that, is this another new guy?
I would like to get a new guy this year if I could, yeah.
So this is another position?
We just, we just hired a guy in water, didn't we?
Question.
Correct.
We have, what, four guys in water now?
Three.
Three.
Yeah, John, Puckett, four.
Yep, four guys?
Yep.
How many guys we have in DPW, five guys?
Correct, I mean, either that or we can split them water and sewer.
Why, why do we need another guy?
If I'm gonna start doing more projects, it seems like I'm always stealing guys from water, too, to do.
I see, but it works both ways, I got my water guys doing highway jobs, right, so it works both ways, and it's, I mean, you can't, we gotta be careful, because you only have so much money to spend, you can't keep raising rates, water and sewer rates are already high, right? And that's what this is gonna do, and maybe you may not show it up in the first couple of years of water rates, but, because you have surplus, but you're gonna deplete surplus. And the idea of building surplus was for the board to be able to come up with a plan, with wooden and covered, and say, whatever is the town, we're gonna go through our water infrastructure, that badly needs to be replaced, and that's where that surplus was supposed to be expended on.
So.
Actually, we already have a point, but.
Yeah.
Dan, there was a, there was a position added last year, correct, and this is a, this is a new position this year as well?
And I know we have opposite thought of that, is if you're gonna start experiencing all these water mean. Sewer, water.
I'm gonna need guys for doing that, and then I'm.
The extra person, you know, I, I know it comes out of the water and sewer users, but, I mean, it's cheaper in the long run if it's done in-house with the men that we.
Again, gearing up for that, if you don't have, if you don't have the guy, you're not gonna be able to do the projects that you're thinking of doing, you know what I mean? So I'm trying to gear up, can you get, if you're gonna start doing water mean project, sewer mean project, stuff like that.
Suits.
So, I mean, so how many people are, like, at almost the retirement age?
Um, well, Paul Fortin, he's, almost all the guys, to tell you the truth, we got Matt Tripp, that's, Matt on water, I got one, one guy, two guys, two guys in water are younger, and two guys are gonna be retiring within the next five to seven years.
That's always up, so I, I'm not inclined to add a position to water right now, after we just did it last year, I'm really not, I'm concerned.
I think once we get the, the study done and know where we're going.
And get some money out, get a door, it's gonna get hired out.
Yeah, we did, yeah, yeah, see how we're gonna be doing it, I mean, it's, it's all on YouTube.
Well, you know, it's, it's a thing, is it's, it's shared responsibilities, we've always pitched things with highway, water, and sewer, right? It's, it's a team, it truly is.
Yep.
And that's part to your accreditation, is that you built that team where everybody seems to have a good relationship and working together. When we do sewer projects, like we did the last one, you guys went in, highway went in, and did the sewer project, we backcharged those residents, and we charged them for that amount of your time doing it.
Correct.
The same thing can be done when we do the same thing, we'll be borrowing wa, highway guys to help assist in the water projects, and we'll be looking at doing the same thing, we'll figure out what the cost of project is, you split that up amongst the users, and it all gets allocated into the costs, and have a nice day. And then that's been a pretty good system to us, and been pretty fair to everybody, so, you know, salaries, you're bringing on more people, you got health benefits, you got pensions you're gonna deal with, the costs are a lot more than the 35, 40,000 dollars that you're projecting you put inside of a budget, so, and that's a big impact on the taxpayers in the future, so I'm just always conservative when I think that, let's find and, let's, let's see what really is needed, and I'm not so sure we need to be adding a guy here to water.
Could we, I mean, suggest pass on it now?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, I mean, it's open.
And if you just, just, and let's, let's talk about it again, and.
Yep, no, no, that's fine, and like you said, we assess it, as we, we definitely have to start talking about what we're gonna do with the yard.
My problem, my, my bigger problem is, is we can't have you guys out, you're talking about all this Gammon Road stuff, and the highway department's gonna be out there, so you're not gonna be able to come over here and do all kinds of water projects when you guys are all out there, so we need a list, what you should do is, what you need to do is create a list of the board, and say, this is what my, my projections are, this is what we plan on doing in the, in the next year, highway department, drainage and stuff like that, so we know what you're gonna be doing, where the cost's gonna be associated, we know that we're not gonna be able to do, go out and do water or sewer. The following year, if that's where you have these projects and you already budget for those projects, at least the board can then review the budget and say, okay, you know what, we don't want you to go out and do any more of that, we need you to start working on water infrastructure, replacing some of these leaded pipes that are, you know, asbestos or lead and all that, you know, the pipes that we got that's like 200 years old, that's like Flint, Michigan?
Yep.
We talked about this, right? It's a real concern, at least to me, and I'm sure it is to the board, once they're further educated, I think Mr. Chopper might be educated on the old pipes that we have, so that is a concern, we need to start that project, when is that gonna happen? So that's the things that we need to start talking about with you as the department there, and make a plan for the following year, and then we'll budget that for that year, but we can't just say we need more guys, we need to do this, we need to do that, when you don't have enough right now to get done what you need to get done, you can't be in all these places at once, Dan, with machines, we only have one excavator, right? You're not taking, you're not taking over a mini excavator, but, and you're, good luck trying to get to water play with a backhoe and making any progress with that, so it's just not realistic, right? So, you know, but look at what you've got for projects in this calendar year, the boards should be approving these projects, saying, yep, we're gonna move forward with all that, we agree this needs to be done, the reasons why it needs to be done, but then the board also needs to be, as the water and sewer community, just say, we have a responsibility to our water and sewer users to fix problems, and that's where we're gonna have to take you and say, okay, well, you're done with Gammons Road and Mendel Road and all that stuff, well, we need you to come over here now, we need to make a plan for water infrastructure, and how are we gonna do it? Can we use in-house, or do we need to go outsource it? Right? I think that's a more realistic plan for the board, and to, and to actually get things done, that's my.
And just, Mr. Man, you run your department, I mean, the only comment I'd make, and I can't say that I really understand, you know, what your people do and the transfer of new departments, but, you know, I know that we expect you to do more all the time, and this board's been very complimentary of the work you've taken internal to your department rather than subcontracting it, and, you know, I think, to Mr. Gaspere's point as well, if, you know, in, in your mind, you're saying, I need another guy because I'm replacing those old water pipes, then maybe the next time we have this conversation, you're saying, I'm, I'm adding this body, and this is what I'm gonna do with that body, I think we get Mr. Gaspere comfortable, and get us all maybe a little bit more comfortable with, you know, adding, adding this person.
Bigger plan.
Yeah, the bigger plan, what's, what's this body doing, rather than I just, I just need the body?
Yep.
It's a, it's just a bigger, it's a plan, not just for today, but for tomorrow and the future, and that's what we need to do, is we need to develop that plan, you know it as well as I do, we've, we've gone over all these infrastructure problems that we have, we have an incredible amount of water infrastructure that needs to be sooner or later, sooner rather than later, get to it, when is that gonna occur? I don't know.
Correct. We got a plan, we have, actually, what we can do, we need a plan, on the water, we have a plan, we just, we gotta get the funding and, you know, the, I mean, some of it, like you said, we can, you know, go, it's gonna be more discussion.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, sewer, probably the same.
Correct.
Looking at the sewer.
And the only other thing was the, the increase was in the water bills, which was just, the increases from the benefit, which is an estimate, but we didn't get them rates yet, so that's an estimate on that as well.
Where are we now on sewer, we're on sewer right now?
Oh, we went to.
And I'm seeing the indirect costs, line item, is this the year we're gonna deal with that?
Just gonna have to actually have a discussion about it, but I think...
I know, zero.
I think there are some costs in here, but, um, we, we need to have that discussion, and I'd like to do it in January or February, if we're going through the budget.
Now's the time to make it, yeah.
There's a, you know, I, particularly with the golf committee, I find it very...
I know, it's controversial.
Very controversial. And, and I think I've actually sort of wanted to what the golf committee's decision is. So, I think we need to talk about how we're gonna portion costs in a rational basis.
Yes.
And I think we need to come across with a proposal to you, rather than just say, you're gonna dump every cost, no, you're gonna add then, please.
Yes, okay.
All right, Dan, you wanna go down the budget?
We're going, we're going, with the water, or we do, with the sewer?
Water, I think we discussed that.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, once he gets on sewer, I'm probably gonna jump back into water, because I have another question about water, but I don't wanna bring that out till you go to sewer.
Okay.
All right. This is a reference point, that's all.
So, the increase there in the water bills, the rental of the machine that was for the sewer project, that you looked down there?
Nope, the rentals on that was our server that's down, actually, now, like, that's on the rentals, right? That's where that was, you can...
Yeah, you're using your server now.
Well, we're renting one now off of Mueller, because the server that we had here went down on us. So, this is just, again, a temporary thing until, what's it called? That's Kathy's, more Kathy's, I remember. Um, until we get on this cloud, which was supposed to be in January, but it's, we're here, yeah, and then they're behind, so... Hopefully, this might not be, this might not be the money we, we need, but we have to put it in in case they don't get set up for us, you know, Mueller, and that's for the support for our radio leak system that we have now.
Last January or this January?
This January.
Just our...
It's supposed to be so.
All right.
But we're putting it in, anticipating that it doesn't go through, you know, so that might not be an option. We don't gonna need that, so, that funding, so...
The sewer's kinda flat, right? We went up seventy-five grand for the big city in New Bedford, which we all know how that goes, right?
Correct.
But other than that, we're pretty flat. We got some server numbers in there, but that's only because we're down and all that stuff. So, Mr. Chairman, if you can...
Yeah.
The, um, the reserve in sewer, we have a reserve for unforeseen expenses, right?
Yep.
And it's equated to fifty thousand dollars. Why don't we have that in water?
I don't think that'd be a good idea, Ken.
I'm sorry?
That would be a good idea, Ken.
So...
We've got a reserve fund of water, though.
Where is it?
For sure.
Well, the difference is that sewer is an enterprise. Water is receipts reserve.
Revenue fund.
So, yeah, it's a revenue fund, so I think it works a little differently, but I checked it.
It's a surplus, though, it has a surplus.
It has a surplus.
It has a surplus.
Right, so I don't think that's showing in your budget, because it's a surplus account, an asset. So, I'll check on finding how that, okay, let me check with Julie to find out how that works.
I'm just, when I looked through the budget today, I was kinda blown away that we didn't have anything, because water, I mean, we have way more water infrastructure than we do sewer infrastructure, right?
The difference is an enterprise fund versus a receipts reserve account, so the accounting is different. So, you, we might actually have...
It's always been labeled as something different. We used to label it, the D O R says, oh, don't think of it as that, and it's a revenue fund, and...
The problem I come always down to is I don't understand why one is set up as a, as an enterprise fund, one is set up as a receipts reserve.
I think it's, I think it's because ninety percent of the population, the residential homes and businesses are, ninety percent of it is water users.
Yep.
And that's truthful, because we have twenty-nine hundred and change, and we only have thirty-three hundred households, so it's ninety percent.
But what, what this is doing is, this is, this is proposing to add fifty thousand in the sewer, adding fifty thousand to the reserve. So, there's already something there, presumably above and beyond the fifth.
In the enterprise fund.
Yep.
It's an enterprise fund so long as it's efficient on its own, no tax dollars are supporting it. Therefore, it has a reserve account, meaning it has a reserve for unforeseen. It's a budgeted item, so it just repeats every year. If you don't use it, it flows back to the enterprise fund, and it can be re-appropriated. In the receipts reserve fund, because I think Mr. Gasper's correct, because of the volume of taxpayers, they have access to the general fund, so your reserve would be going to the finance committee's reserve account.
My, my best memory was there were reserves, there were dollars set aside in both water and sewer, or unexpected.
The direct answer to the question I gotta say tonight is, let me find out, and I'll make a statement.
I'd like to, because, in, in the case of an emergency, I'd rather not act on the finance committee's reserve account, okay? We should have fifty thousand or whatever we decide to put there. And, and we, we put it forward when we, when we created these line items, that that money's, just like golf course, it's only there, and if it is to be used, it has to be voted on by the voter selected before that use can be used, because it's surplus. You can't spend surplus unless it's voted on by town meeting, that's the whole reason why we put fifty thousand dollars. I think it was a great idea in case of an emergency, but I also think and feel that that should also take place in our water account, that we should have something there, because we have a lot of water infrastructure, and God forbid, if we have a water main break, where it hits the fan, we could be in trouble, because I don't think we're gonna have enough water revenue in our water account to even try to cover that cost, so we'd be holding emergency town meeting for an appropriation out of surplus, that's all I'm saying. So, if we can investigate that a little bit. Dan, going back to the overtime number that we did in the DBW, we increased, because we know contractual issues. We didn't do it in water and sewer, should we? Should we increase overtime a little bit in water and sewer?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I didn't go into that, Ken, I just got, um, again, I didn't really have that much time with the budgets. It was kind of a fast thing this year.
I, I...
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
I'd like...
I would, I would really like to look at that, though, and see what the, you know, an employee's making in that department, you know, and what their salaries are, so I can come up with a figure before I throw in, kinda number in at you, you know what I mean? So, let me...
I'm not, I'm not saying we should be doing a lot, but, because you added five to the twenty thousand, right?
Yep.
So, that was twenty-five percent increase?
Yep.
Okay? Because it's time and a half, so it's gonna escalate that percentage. We didn't do anything for water and sewer.
Yep.
And we just talked about four guys.
Yep.
Okay? So, those four guys are gonna earn more money. We need, that overtime's gonna be absorbed quicker, and you're reducing the hours in water and sewer now for overtime, right?
Yep.
So, I think that we need to do a little bit in water and sewer, as far as an increase goes. That's all I'm saying.
Yep.
So, just check it out.
Yep.
If you need to, to change the overtime line items for water and sewer, that's fine.
Yep.
But I think that it's probably gonna, you're probably gonna see it's necessary. Just, just proof of thought.
All set? Last one? We just went to sewer, then?
Yep.
Think we're done with this?
You good?
Thank you, Dan, you have a question?
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. I know you didn't say much tonight, but, your presence is always welcome.
Full business, entertainment licenses and automatic amusement licenses. Uh, do gentlemen have a chance to go over any of it? I mean, I went over to Mr. Noble, there's a lot of options, there's crazy fees we could charge, but I don't think we should do that. Some of them are actually stupid, or whatever.
And conversations individually with...
Uh, yeah, you would never suppose this, obviously.
I've come back with what I think are logical prices based on, um, current license fees, and sort of even them out a little bit. There's really sort of revenue neutral at this point.
So, these are about what we charged them?
About what we charged, I think one of them we went up ten dollars, the others are about where they were.
Who's that?
Who's that sheet? It's the one that says recommended, it was in the folder, the folder.
Was that a folder?
Yeah, it says, you say the first line, they're called, recommended?
Yep. Is it recommended fifty?
It just says adjusted fee schedule.
The suggested fee schedule, the fee range where it says recommended?
Recommended fifty, could charge up to eighty?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That would say, yeah.
That's the one.
This one says it, yeah, so I don't know where we're at, so...
To where, I, I, I could run and get the sheet, but it's within, it's ten bucks. Most of the, I think it was one in forty, everything else was fifty. I didn't think it was necessary to go. Thank you.
This one?
Thank you, yes, please. Yes, that's the one. Okay.
So, these are...
These are...
No, no, this is the previous, this is what we...
That was the old one?
Oh, the old guy, okay, all right.
And this is what I'm recommending, so Kevin can tell me how far off I am?
Yes.
So, for example?
Okay, non-live, one, radio portable audio device, pipe didn't use it. Use it by electrical or mechanical, means background music and CD player, recommended fifty. State recommends we could charge up to eighty. What was we before, forty? Do you have the old tape in there?
Yeah, but it doesn't, this isn't correlated to what non-live is.
All right.
So...
This is, we didn't have...
Non-live, non-live is restricted music, like, it's fifty bucks.
Yeah, right, so I didn't change it.
Then, non-live, two, uh, one jukebox and more than five TVs.
In all the conversations I had with you guys, you didn't see enough difference between live one and live two, to make it worth anything different. A live two covers everything in live one, so who, so who cares?
And recommend you could charge up to one twenty.
Right.
Non-live, three, uh, jukebox and more than five TVs, we recommend it a hundred, and we charge up to one eighty, it's a recommendation.
So, what are we doing with non-life?
Uh, one hundred, recommendation.
From fifty?
It's the non-life.
Non-life, three.
Non-life, three, I'm sorry, yeah.
This, we've never had it on.
More than five TVs.
We've never had non-life.
That's okay.
Non-life, three is the only one to a hundred?
Probably, we've never had it, yeah.
Yeah. I don't really understand, you know, why more TVs matters.
No.
Maybe back in the days when, you know, TVs were a bigger novelty.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, their, their idea of a big screen TV was above twenty-seven inches, and that's sort of, it's pretty small now.
Sometimes, some, but the more TVs, though, in establishment, especially if you have residencies around the establishment, it could become a nuisance because of the lighting.
Right. It's a possibility, but we don't have that many.
That's the only thing I could think of.
I don't, I don't even think, to be honest with you, and I could be wrong, and you guys know more than I do, but do we have a, a facility right now in town that has more than five TVs on it at the given time?
Doubt it. So, we're just gonna put that in place, follow the incident if it comes up.
Correct. And I'm recommending that we don't really care how big the TV is.
Want a motion to approve?
Uh, well, we gotta go, we gotta, we gotta do the whole thing. I mean, there's, there's another, uh...
There's, there's live...
We're not recommending, yeah, it's widescreen TVs twenty-seven and over, you can charge up to one eighty per screen. We're not recommending that. Live entertainment, instrumental vocal music not to exceed a total of three performers. That's a hundred dollars recommenden, recommendation from us. State recommends four hundred, up to four hundred. Uh, live two, this is what we recommend, instrumental vocal music exceeding three performers in or DJ, or dancing by patrons and/or karaoke, regardless of the number of performers. It's two hundred, um, we could charge up to two thousand, depending on the size of the facility. And then on the back, it's just, um...
It's gonna be charged for pinball, pinball machine?
Yeah, per, per automatic pinball machine, it'd be fifty dollars, all the rest widescreen TV, DVD, DVR players, board games, table games, uh, movie screens were not recommended. And administrative fees were not recommended them. Hearing, hearing fee, application fee, renewal application, and amendment fee, change of manager, detective entertainment were not recommended. So, that's the fees, fifty, fifty, a hundred, a hundred and two hundred. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I wanna thank all of you for the input, I really appreciate it.
It's confusing.
It's, it's, it's crazy how the state does things, and if they still got V C I's on this stuff, I mean, can somebody from the state update their policies?
Well, you know, I was thinking, we have our new state rep, I think I've been bringing it to his attention, but this is pretty antiquated.
You mean, what's that, eight-track players? I mean, seriously, you look at all of them, it's pretty comical, they're on albums.
Uh, new business, citizens' interest will be appointed to community preservation commission. Ms. Leonard is requested, at least one, Ms. Leonard is requesting to be appointed to the community preservation committee. At this time, the council shall show up on members, the council shall consist of at least four citizen members appointed by board of selectmen along with members of designated by five other board members. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Leonard?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Thanks.
You're on all the committees now.
It's been two in the last two weeks.
Better compete with my center of...
Uh, town administrators report.
Very good. A couple of things for you that's in your, your kit. Uh, we got a Maya, Grant Maya is our town's insurance carrier. We're gonna grant from them for the installation of backup cameras, for the amount of about six thousand dollars. And, in fact, actually, I don't even know the size. Sorry?
What are those going on?
Uh, the two council and aging vans, okay, because the, the, that's pretty restricted, your view. And then we're gonna move from there to the fire engines, uh, because those are to be retrofitted. Uh, and then if we have any money left, we'll go to the DBW checks. Got it, thank you, thank you very much. So, there's an excellent, is looking for places that their investment would save an accident.
Yes.
Most important thing, I think, is the council and aging vans, because they're very big, and they got a very restricted back view. So, let's put a camera on there, so make the driver a little bit easier for them. I just wanna report back on the Old Colony Regional Charter Review. We did submit the charter to town council for review. They asked you to sign off, because three of the towns were represented by the same law firm, so you had to acknowledge that, you knew that the other towns were... They gave corrections and emailed it back to me, I sent them over to, uh, the superintendent. He's given those, and the other towns that had other attorneys, they're gonna come back with a compilation, and then give us back a redline version, so they can see what has changed in the district agreement. And then that will have to be approved, uh, to make a change, yeah, by the five towns.
Well, we, we like a good, a good final redline version, so we can see what we're voting, because the document they gave us when we went...
Yeah, it's crazy.
Was unreadable.
I kept it.
In a weird sense, there's so many changes, I almost wonder if you can do a redline, because of the volume of changes. But, you know what, that's gonna be their problem to resolve.
That's their problem.
The, um, the, if you could, you said two other towns went outside of the scope?
Two other towns, we're only with three other towns and man employees.
We're five towns, three of them have COBLO and Page, the other two's have other independent...
Can we find out if their council had any, all the same issues?
Yes, and I can. But they'll all actually be incorporated into the change. What the interesting thing is, the changes that COBLO and Page picked up were those that are already part of the state's requirement. So, it really was sort of interesting that they picked up what the Old Colony Regional Council didn't pick up. So, real embarrassing. So, uh, but I think when we come back, we'll have a, a, a super quality document. I'm wondering if the volume of changes is why it's so, so a slow process, but in fairness to Aaron, I have a back review, so I'll start the moment. So, we will have the answer for you. And the last item is at the behest of the town clerk. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, nomination papers are now available starting April first for the town election, for the two. They're now available for the April first town election, and they will be available from now until February seventh. You get that right?
I don't know, Tim, just ask, you know, relay that information.
Do we have a, a meeting schedule, like, I see we've got the next meeting, do we have, do we have a meeting schedule that goes up past that?
Yes, we do.
All right, I haven't seen it.
I think it's on the back of your book.
Backup, we move it to the back.
February fifth.
It's on our toes, it's in the front.
I apologize.
Subject change.
Subject to change.
Everybody wanted to know, make sure they got the right book, so we put that up.
Okay, any other business?
Um, at this time, uh, I've accepted a motion to go to executive session under General Law C three zero eight twenty-one A one to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather, and professional confidence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And I also move that the board enter an executive session under General Law thirty-eight twenty-one A two